Like to call the meeting's order. Misty, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. And in conjunction with that, Misty had included a letter in your information-only packet that talks about when it's appropriate to abstain and things to consider. And ideally, if you're comfortable, let the rest of the council know why you're abstaining on an issue. It's not required, but this helps them understand rather than saying, "I abstain." If you're comfortable sharing that with the council. The other thing that Misty had provided for us is we've done an awful lot of tabling motions, and we also go by Robert's Rules. And when you table a motion, you have to bring it back off of the table. To put it on the table takes a simple majority. You put it there. To bring it back off takes a two-thirds majority. So it is possible that when it gets on the table, it may never come back. But the right way to do it is to either defer or postpone it. Keep that memo from Misty with you, and we'll refer to it from time to time. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Misty? Did I butcher it badly?
Nope. Did great.
All right.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to, I need a motion to approve an amended agenda for tonight. The amendment is to add a council update in between the proclamation and the communications from the public. Tracy has been updating us on the road reconstruction project, and Jeff would like him to update us on the first meeting of every month. So that's the reason that we're amending the agenda tonight, is to add a council update. The other thing, this is the first time that you'll have seen a five-minute limit per speaker from communications from the public. I'm pretty much an advocate for allowing people to speak until they've said what they want to say, but that does, in some situations, cause a problem. The meetings can get long while we're allowing them to do that. So want to ask folks, your communications from the public, to please keep them to five minutes, and we'll see how that works out for us. So with that, I need a motion to approve an amended agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve an amended agenda, adding council update by the city engineer and communications from the public with a five-minute limit per speaker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 17th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 17th council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between $256,468.
Second.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, to clarify the dollar amount.
Say what?
Four hundred.
Dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Sixty-eight minutes.
I'll second that. Two hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred dollars and sixty-eight cents.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the current claims.
I have to abstain from voting because I have a claim in this batch.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $541,000 and seven hundred, or
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims for $7,525.11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to a proclamation for tonight. Lung cancer awareness month. Office of the Mayor, Hot Springs, South Dakota proclamation, Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and in South Dakota in 2022, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control, there were 3,060 new lung cancer cases and 2,110 deaths because of lung cancer between 2014 and 2018 in South Dakota. And whereas, screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography can lead to earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality by 20% compared to screening by chest X-ray in the National Lung Screening Trial, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women, as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas, women diagnosed with lung cancer are more likely to be younger and never smokers. Lung cancer incidence and mortality rates in women are rising relative to men. More women die from lung cancer than breast cancer every year, and by 2035, it is expected that more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas, organizations such as Lung, American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative, and Women's Lung Cancer Forum are committed to education about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Hot Springs. Now therefore, I, Mayor Robert Nelson, and the City of Hot Springs do hereby proclaim November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Hot Springs, and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities, and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. And a copy of this has been sent off to the Lung Cancer Awareness folks. Council update. Tracy.
I just see you have a hearing at 7:10.
Thank you, yes. So appreciate your reminding. You've got about a minute and a half, and then we'll have our public committee, and then we'll have you come back and finish.
All right. I was just noticing that, wanted to make sure that you got that in. Well, in the past several weeks, there's definitely been some progress, I mean, very noticeable progress. The concrete work over here on the Jensen Highway part of the project is pretty much done, at least for this season, and what they'll be doing. I think they'll be getting the sidewalks poured down here at the intersection, if they didn't already today. I did notice that they got about a block of North, or South Chicago poured today, and I noticed it's blanketed tonight, completely blanketed, so that's good, in case it gets as cold as it has been. The biggest change, which of course everybody's probably noticed, is that North River Street has been partially milled for the beginning of the installation of the water main, and it looks like the two-way traffic, head-to-head traffic, is actually working fairly well. Of course, we get to see that pretty good there at City Hall, and I think it seems to be functioning pretty well. So do you need to go to the hearing for a second here?
You've got 10 seconds.
Okay. I'll be back in a moment.
All right. As Tracy reminded us, we're at 7:10, we have a public hearing. It's a special sale alcohol beverage license application from the Boys and Girls Club of Hot Springs for the Wreath and Wine Annual Fundraiser Event, scheduled for November 12th, 2022, beginning at 5:00 p.m. at the Mueller Civic Center, 801 South Sixth Street. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address that? Is there anyone here from the Boys and Girls Club that would like to speak to it? Come on down.
I'm Lisa Seigdalen, the 14-year-old.
Would you?
At the mic.
That way, when the folks get online and they watch the city council meeting, they will hear you.
Hello, Lisa Seigdalen with Boys and Girls Clubs. I've been with the organization since we opened here in Hot Springs, and we thank the city for the support. We certainly couldn't do it without the community and the support that we have. This event is the standard event that we've done every year for quite a few years. It did get canceled because the one big snowstorm that came through Hot Springs last year was the day of the event, so it didn't happen, but we are redoing it this year. And so, yes, that's, any questions on that?
Thank you for being here, Lisa.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do for our children.
All right. Anyone from the public? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then. 7:11? 7:12, I'm sorry. So need a motion to approve, deny, or defer the alcoholic beverage license application?
I'll make a motion to approve special sale alcoholic beverage license application from the Boys and Girls Club of Hot Springs for the Wreath and Wine Annual Fundraiser Event, scheduled for November 12th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center, 801 South Sixth Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations. Thank you.
Have a good time. Make lots of money.
Back to you, Tracy.
Round two. Of course, we did have another water main break two weeks ago Sunday, so we're just hoping that that was the last one, but we'll just see how it plays out. Once again, it was the same type of conditions at that pipe, very thin, that seems to be consistent all the way through that. So, you know, the thing is, the timing of the road construction project is pretty good because we would have had to have done that water main no matter what. So if it would have been no road construction project, we would have had to have done it anyway, and then, of course, that would have had all of the resurfacing on that side of the street, but of course, been all on us. So I guess that's one good part of that. Of course, if the road construction project would have happened about two years ago, it might have been just a little bit more ahead of these breaks, but anyway. That is, yeah, we're getting well-practiced at that. Within about 15 minutes after it broke, we actually had the valves closed down, lost very little water, and the crew was there within, just within a very short time. We were sawing asphalt and making holes in the ground really, really quick. So everybody did a really good job that day, but yeah, we're getting in pretty good practice, but we don't want to be too praxist on that, especially that part of town. Other items, let's see, I had mentioned North River Street, the milling has been done. Of course, you can see the temporary crosswalks that have been put in, including some striping, which is really good there in front of City Hall especially. We did get our shipment of some temporary lights that will be put up this week along North River Street that are self-contained solar LED, and anyone that saw them at City Hall today was pretty impressed. I was very impressed by them, so hopefully they'll work well for our purposes. As far as the utility department and what they need to do related to the water project, we have a couple valves on Albany that we'll be changing out when they switch the traffic over to the new pavement, and then we'll have access to that side. And for this week, or this first of the month, I think that's pretty much where we're at. I'll answer any questions.
Are they going to be doing university intersection with this part, or is that going to be next year?
Everything I've been picking up on is they're going to do that yet this fall.
Okay.
And we do get our updates once a week at the contractors' meeting, which has actually been postponed by a day. But the public meeting is still at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning at the American Legion, at least that's what I think I understood correctly from the email today. Anything else?
Anyone else, counsel? To your question, Deborah, fair question, but what we've found out is that that's what they hope to be able to accomplish as we get into winter now, in November and December. It may, they may be able to get through university and they may not. That is what they fully intended, that's where they want to end up.
Yeah. Miami weather, we have a cold spell coming up, you know, looks like about a week of some pretty cold weather, but maybe it'll warm back, warm back up afterwards, hopefully, but you never know. Anyone else?
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy. Sorry about that. I just got a question. We had a, for sewer and water, we had a poly pump for sledge and press. Is that to enhance our new equipment?
That is the sledge press that we've had for a few years. The polymer pump that it had on it, it wore out. So, yeah, that's what it was for.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to communications from the public. Is there anyone that'd like to address the council? Karen?
My name is Karen Meston. I'm the Chair of Christmas in the Hills, and I wanted to update you a little bit. This is perfect segue from the construction, because that's why I'm here. Each year, since I think about 2005, we've been having a parade, a Christmas light parade, and as you all know, I assume, that parade goes through the construction area on River Street. And that's probably not a very safe thing to do this year. So due to that, we're going to change the route of the parade, and what I've given you is a map, and the red on that map is a drawing of where we're going to do the route this year. And I would like to say that today I spoke with Mayor Nelson, and I also spoke with DOT, both the gentleman who's in charge here of the project, as well as one of the folks in the regional office in Custer. And they have heard about this change and approve of it. I have an official change modification that I can give to you, Misty, for your file, that modifies the parade approval that was submitted this year. So just to go over the map, if you'll notice on the left side there, it says Parade Start, and that's the State Veterans Home. And we would continue down Minicotta as normal, all the way to the Evans Apartments, where the program takes place and the tree lighting. And instead of turning right, as we normally would, we are turning left, and we'll be going past the depot and that whole block, past the flatiron, to where the Dale's Restaurant used to be, where we'll be turning right. We'll cross the bridge there on 385 and take a left at that very first street, which is Coldbrook Avenue. And for those of you who are familiar with the July 4th parade, this is where the parade lines up to start. They go around there, and they wait back there until the races are done in the morning, so that then they can come on through and, and come down the opposite way that we're going. So then we'll end right there, near the plunge. That way, people who are in that neighborhood will be able to see the parade, and there's parking all along there by the depot, there's parking by the courthouse, and there's parking all along that area, as well as there by the plunge. There's plenty of parking there, too. So we're hoping that this will alleviate any problems that people might have. There's going to be a trench most likely dug all along that construction area, and we don't want any unforeseen problems with that. So do you have any questions or anything?
Karen, thank you. We've been getting a lot of calls at City Hall about the parade route, so I'll share this with the ladies.
Yes. We've been getting calls at City Hall, at the chamber, and I've been saying, "Just wait till after tonight." The other thing I wanted to mention, too, is if you could all please pass the word with the people that you know, as well as obviously officially, and also, we'll be contacting the normal channels of communication, the newspaper, the chamber, and any Facebook, but if you have access to any of those social media sites, too, that'd be great. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank you all for all your support of the Christmas in the Hills activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. When you're talking, Karen, when you're talking about getting the word out, we'll get a notice on the city's website also.
You'll get a notice what?
On the city's website.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We'll make a news item out of it, and I just scribbled all over this copy, so if someone has a copy they didn't scribble on, we'll scan that.
I can send you a digital copy.
I'll keep it a secret, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you again very much. Appreciate it. People need to hear it lots of times, because everybody's so used to going to their favorite spot, and if it's anyplace south of Minicotta, they're going to be disappointed people, and we don't want that to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, you started speaking at 7:18, and you finished at 7:22, so you're spot on. Thank you.
Five minutes.
Anyone else from the public that'd like to address the council? Erica?
I'm Erica Ekrem, representing my household at 109.
Can you put your mouth closer?
I'm Erica Ekrem. I'm representing my household at 109 South Connor Street, and we've had an ongoing issue with cats, and I'm here to refute a ticket that we were issued.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, and I'm close. Sorry.
I'll pick it up. Is that better? So I'm here to refute a ticket that was given to us, and I believe it was under very vague grounds. I have a ticket here for a wandering cat. The cat is described as yellow and black, short hair. We do not have a yellow and black short hair. Sex unknown, name unknown. We have registered cats. All these should be known if it was indeed our cat that was wandering. So we came to refute this within 72 hours, as it says at the bottom of this. Mayor Bob was not in the office at that time, and so we said, "Hey, how can we refute this?" The person at the desk, initials B.B., said, "Okay, we'll take this to the city administrator." My husband called and left a message with the administrator that day, and we have not heard back. That was September 1st, 2022. And I believe you've all gotten a note about our case. I believe, Bob, you have, you passed that out to everyone?
It will be discussed at the end of the council meeting during executive session.
Okay. If we are to get a citation, I would hope that it would be detailed enough for us to know that it is indeed our cat. The cat was not captured. It was reported, basically, as a hearsay. Like, there's no proof that it was our cat wandering. There's many cats in our neighborhood wandering with a description of a yellow, it says yellow and black, yellow or black, I don't know what the control officer actually saw, or if he did indeed see it, or if it was just a neighbor reporting. And if it's, if that is going to be the case, where you can just cite somebody based on a neighbor who has a grudge against us saying we have a cat out wandering, and then give us fines, like, that does not seem fair. So I'd ask you to look at that, look at your process. We did not receive a call back. What is the process for refuting a citation? Is there a process for that? Where we can take it to a neutral party and talk about it?
Once a city ordinance violation is known, then that type of citation can be issued.
Okay. And is it, is there proof that that was our cat out wandering?
So the conversations that I've had with James and the property owner who is concerned or has mentioned that the ordinance has been violated, in that initial conversation, when James saw the video, he acknowledged that the cat in the video was that one. Be patient with me here. So the colors that you're talking about in that violation were consistent with the cat that was on the video. To your direct point, does that mean the cat that ended up that particular citation being the specific cat? I can't tell you, yes, that it was.
Okay, so then it seems like this citation does not stand.
Well, I'll have that discussion with council. I'm confident that it's a fair citation.
Are you confident that it could legally be held in court as a fair citation?
Have you, have you received the?
We talked about this today, Bob. I've read that.
Yeah, okay. So I've asked for guidance from our attorney. So to your direct question, do I know whether we'll stand up in court or not? No, I don't.
Is it worth taking it that far, if you do not have direct proof that it was our cat? And we talked to you right after that incident happened, so I'm assuming it wasn't based off that incident of you seeing a video of a cat in the dark on a surveillance camera. It just doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like there's due process being allowed for us. It doesn't seem like there's hard physical proof, and I ask you to look at that, and there's, this is just opening an entire can of worms for wandering cats. And the potential of anyone who has a grudge against a wandering cat in their neighborhood, they can then take that to you, to you, and then would result in people being unfairly cited.
So when our AC unit or heating unit turns on, it's a little more difficult to hear you, so I can just make sure that, you know, the microphone is close enough that council can understand what you're saying.
Well, as a citizen, I just ask for, like, a fair process and hard proof that that was indeed what we're giving a citation for.
And as I told you and James today, this will be discussed tonight, and council will give their opinion, their direction on how we need to proceed on this.
Yeah, and in my entire time of owning pets for 40-some years, I've never had a citation for a wandering pet, dog, cat, anything. We're not negligent owners, and we just ask to be treated fairly. Is there any questions?
Erica, if you don't mind, I'd like to clarify one thing, just so that, and this is a public issue as well. If you are in contact with anybody in our office, myself included, I returned those phone calls and left three messages for your husband or for you. Your husband, I believe, called me. But if you don't get an answer, or you don't think you've got an answer from us, please escalate what you did and took it to the mayor. So I want to be sure that the public is aware that if for some reason we're on vacation or whatever, we don't get the information, you know, please escalate a matter, which is what you did exactly. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay. Thanks.
Erica, just so I get your name spelled right, E-R-I-C-K-A?
E-R-I-C-A.
Okay. And Ekrem?
Yeah, Ekrem, E-K-R-E-M.
Great. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Erica?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? We don't have much public left.
I got something to say, Robert. Eric came to Public Works, said we wanted to talk tonight, they couldn't make it. We wanted to thank the city for backing everything they do.
For the river project between Jennings and University, right.
Who was this?
Eric Boyd.
Yes.
Came to Public Works to thank the city.
Well, he came and talked to Public Works, but he called me to. They called me today, saying, he said he was going to be here tonight and talk to fill in the city, but he couldn't make it. So, he called me and asked Bob to thank the council for him for everything we do for him.
I would like to add to that, since Eric isn't able to be here, but he asked Craig to speak on behalf of the group that's done the work. Anyone that's looked at the area that they've taken care of down there, it's obvious the work that they've done. The fragmites, for me, it's pompous grass. That is gone. And you can see where it was removed. They've also removed some of the tops of the cattails. Eric also talked with us about it's, it's like a weed eater, but it has reciprocating blades on it that will actually cut vegetation under the water. And they're looking at using that. So, I thank them for the work, and we'll continue having the conversations with the best way to manage our cattail growth. We've, on the north section between Jennings and Minnetonka, I've been surprised to see how quickly the cattails come back. There seem to be a very hardy invasive species. We've also replaced some of the cattails with weeds that came from our filter that we used out at, that we got from the landfill. So, we still have challenges in front of us that we need to get taken care of. I think we're going in the right direction as far as reclaiming our river. And I'm anxious to work with Eric and the folks and see where we can get. But I'm still hearing from a lot of the folks around town that they want to see more cattails removed from the river. We'll have to figure out how that, how we do that and what it looks like. Anyone else from the public? All right. Let's go on to our personnel actions, then. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through N?
Make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through N?
Second. Discussion.
I have a question. I have a question. I had a couple of city employees call me over our new part-time person at Wastewater. And I know he worked for us and then quit, but he came back part-time at his old wage. And other part-time employees with the cities kind of, they get the slap in the face that, you know, he makes more than they do after some of them here 15, 18 years. I can understand what they're talking about, I guess. We talked about part-time employees at budget time. But I disagree with starting him at the wage he left with if he's going to be part-time because of what he earned a month. Couldn't quit the city?
Yeah. Let me, let me clarify one thing, Craig, for the record. He technically has never quit. He stayed on board, and we're simply converting him to, or requesting to convert him to part-time. That's all. So, he didn't, he didn't leave and come back, is what happened. So, there's no change in wage, there's no change in anything.
Well, he's been working all this time.
He has been, yes. I'm sorry. I stand corrected. He was out for, he was out for a week. I apologize. I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize. He was out, Craig, you're right, for a short time, on leave without pay, essentially. And we're bringing it back, try to bring it back, as like to bring it back as part-time if we can.
Well, we never had any part-time employees.
That's right. We're requesting council establish that part-time position.
With the hopes to still fill the full-time position eventually?
Well, I agree with the other city employees. I disagree with starting him out at this wage, as soon as we did, quit, come back.
None of those other employees have applied for any of those positions either. So, I don't know if that's, if that makes any difference.
But they're still part-time employees.
Understood. Yes, they are.
With 15 years under their belt.
Are there any certifications that justify the?
Not yet.
Been there long enough.
No, he's only been on board a short time. He came on at, he came on at a rate, he had an offer to do some other work, and he was out on leave without pay for 18 days or whatever. He's, he was going to quit. We asked him to stay because the foreman in that area has left. And so, basically, he's the only one we have left right now in Wastewater. So, he agreed to stay on. If he could stay on part-time, he loses all his benefits, well, he loses his primary benefits, and comes, stays at the same rate of pay.
Any other questions?
I would ask you to put M and not M and N separate and rest, if you would, Mr. Mayor.
So, who made, Ms. De, the motion in the second?
You had J.R. Huddleston motioning and Larry Pratt seconding.
I certainly recognize that doing these all as a group would force, potentially force some of the folks on the council to not vote for employees they feel deserve the Personnel Actions. So, Craig, what is your, what are you asking again? Want to make sure?
I would like M and N to be separate and rest.
All right.
M and N.
But it's up to the guys.
J.R., you made the motion. Are you okay with amending the motion to have Personnel Actions A through L?
Yes, I will do that. Personnel, I make a motion to approve Personnel Action Item A through L.
Larry? You're okay with that? All right. So, the motion on the table is to approve Personnel Actions A through L. Any further discussion on that?
And what is the move, what is the way ahead on M and N?
We'll have another.
Have another motion on that. All right. Everyone, everyone clear on what you're going to be asked to vote on? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right. Personnel Actions A through L are approved. That leaves us with a motion to approve Personnel Actions M and N.
I make a motion to approve Personnel Actions M and N?
Second.
Discussion.
How many, how many people we got down there right now?
In Wastewater, one.
One.
This is the only person we have.
This will be half of one instead of zero.
Yeah, this will be half of one instead of zero.
But how many city employees are certified, work at the Wastewater Treatment Plant?
No, Tracy is the only one right now, excuse me. The engineer is the only one who has wastewater certification at this one.
Yeah, we have a couple others that have certifications in wastewater, just not at the level required to run the system. Tracy is the only one. Right. Tracy is the only one who has the certifications required to run the system.
And I have nothing against this kid. I would vote for him to come to work here, but now that that wage.
It's not a very high wage.
Well, yeah. Tell that to the other part-time employees that make less than this. It's been, like I say, 15 years.
But I will say also, we have had announcements on the street for the last three months in both Water and Wastewater. We've had no, to my knowledge, we've had no other employees apply for those jobs. They've been out there.
There was a reason.
Okay, I don't know. They're still open. Whatever your reason is, they're still open, and they can apply any day.
I mean, on one hand, it kind of puts us over a barrel, but on the other hand, we need the individuals. So, I mean, it's a tough decision to make. Let's be honest.
Well, it's a tough decision to make, but being honest, I don't know that I'd do that job for that money.
I wouldn't.
And if you have nobody else applying, it's in-house, you don't see where, they have any right to complain. But at the same time, what is the near future for this person? Are they going to get certified? Or what's going on there?
I can't answer for this individual. Everybody in the, in the wastewater area, both areas, have opportunities to get certified and make more money, or make an extra dollar an hour. So, you know, my understanding, no, I can't, I really shouldn't speak for him, because I don't know what his long-term intentions are.
That's understandable.
But he's willing to hold the fort for us.
And what are our part-time people making?
There's different rates for different part-time positions. A part-time lifeguard starts at 1,265. All of our part-time positions are due to get an 85 cent increase on January 1 for the state minimum wage increase.
Do we have a part-time person in the streets, apartments, don't we?
We have a few.
And what do they make? I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah. I'd have to look and tell you each individual person and the reason for the rate.
And let me clarify this rate, just in general, is that this rate is what that position was classified as. So, this is what is 1,177, was the rate that, that's the, that's what it was approved by council at. And so, the, him, we're not changing anything. I mean, we've basically brought him in full-time at this rate. We're going to, we'd like to move him to part-time at this rate. There's been no change.
He started at 1,177.
Yeah, he's only been here.
Yeah, I think he got the, was he here for the dollar? He's been here.
He's been a little while. I don't know. I don't remember offhand.
Because when we advertised workers at the street shop, he's only 10 something an hour starter.
They're classified at that rate, yes. That's correct. We have people in parks in summertime that are at minimum wage, whatever that is, so.
All right. Any other questions? Steve, would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry?
Call the roll?
Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Craig Romi?
No.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Melanie Wilson?
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston?
Yes.
Dave Burris?
Yes.
Give 6 to 2.
The motion passes. Takes us to our ordinance. Ordinance Item A, the first reading of Ordinance 1243.
I make a motion. Do I need to make a motion?
Yes, someone does.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1243 and Ordinance revising Title III Administration, Chapter 32 Historic Preservation, 32.02 to 32.08.
Second.
Discussion. Deborah, you want to start us off?
Well, this has been in the works since I got on council and assigned to the Historic Preservation. So, it's been a long time already. The biggest changes are changing all of the weird references to the properties that no one understands to the map, just the simple map that encompasses the historic district as put forward by the State Historic Preservation Commission. So, and then we added all of the codified law references to clarify and back up that those ordinances are backed by state codified laws. And we made clarifications or combination of a Historic Preservation Commission versus a Historic Preservation District Commission. And they're all one in the same in our book here. We've made reference to combine, because we don't have enough people in general to make more than one commission. So, they all just, but it's a state requirement to have a district commission. So, all of the members will be on both commissions. And then we clarified the demolition by neglect to make that a Class II misdemeanor. And that will be on a daily basis. The fine will be a daily addition until rectified. So, those are the highlights in general. Any questions?
I have one very minor question. Under 32.02A2, is that a, on the second line, is that a typo or is that a legal word I don't understand, or in eight accordance?
It's a word.
It's a word?
It's a word.
Okay. Never mind then.
Okay.
And I guess, I think I know the answer to this, but what you've described as far as buildings by neglect being a Class II misdemeanor, does the commission feel like there's adequate provisions in this ordinance to help them preserve our historic buildings?
And does it give you teeth?
Teeth.
That's been a discussion about what teeth we have as a commission. The teeth resides with the city and the council. The commission is pretty much, the power that we have is to tell you what we think you should do. But it's up to the city to be willing to be the enforcers through the building inspection and code department. It's kind of how it's fleshing out.
I have a question. Can you give me an idea of what the map is?
The map encompasses or is the boundaries of the historic district.
Okay. I know. What about, because you got the corner says contributing landscape.
Can you speak up?
The little corner there.
Oh, the menu in the corner.
District boundary, contributing landscape. What is all that about?
What's a contributing resource versus a non-contributing resource?
There are buildings within the historic district that are not contributing. They were, they're newer buildings.
Something like the Wells Fargo Bank.
Right.
Be a non-contributing resource.
Right.
Whereas, the Bodega Building would be a contributing resource.
Right. Yes.
Question I have, you said you want the city and the council to have teeth in it. When the city and the council had engineers look at the building in town, and everybody got on board trying to save it. So, the city and council had to override that, and then they became the bad guy.
I'm not saying it's going to be easy. But it is up to the city to prevent that situation from coming to be again by, you know, prevention rather than having to go through that again.
Well, like, that building that the city ended up tearing down, the county had control of that building because of the taxes, and kept telling it, it wasn't, had nothing to do with the city. And people buy it, and then strip it, and then let it go back to the county. So, are these other buildings you own?
Oh, we're looking at one to the right of City Hall right now. We need to do something about it.
I thought everybody looked at that and said it's a stable building?
It might be stable, but it doesn't mean that it's not demolishing by neglect, with things falling off of it and being open to the environment through broken windows. And there are things from that building inspection that are not where they need to be, and they're not being addressed to improve them. So, we still need to deal with that building. On the premise of it is being demolished by neglect, because it's just not being taken care of.
I want to thank the commission for all the time that they've put into this, and it has been a bunch. This has gone through a number of revisions, as Deborah said. She's been working with it since she got on council. Couple of the things that stand out in this for me, Larry, you were talking about the map, and what?
map and what all of that meant. You know, at the very first part of the ordinance, the district itself is identified line by line, you know, original town, block 1, 2, 1921, so on and so forth. Reading through that, I didn't have a clue of what building or what area they were talking about. So when we talked and the commission talked with the state historical folks and asked them, is it okay to have a picture that shows the historic district so, you know, people can look at and say, okay, yeah, I'm in it? That's the big advantage to the picture itself and then removing all of that line-by-line description. The question had been raised, when you look at the map itself, you know, and you blow it up, is there enough detail for somebody to say, well, here's where I'm at? Am I there or am I not there? It will certainly at least raise the question to go look at it and say, yeah, you are there. So visually, it's easier to pick up, you know, where the district is at. The codified laws that Deborah was talking about, you know, as a council, we've been working very hard towards referencing codified law where we can rather than repeating codified law in our own ordinances. So as a codified law changes, we don't have to change our ordinances. So I think the changes that the commission has made get us closer to where we need to be, to Craig's point, as far as, both Craig and Deborah's, as far as demolition by neglect. And going through this, the commission members picked out that we can, again, use codified law to do the demolition by neglect. It's $500 per violation per day. So now the council has some meat in front of you if you choose to take that. So it would help, Craig, in your situation, you were talking about, you know, everybody knows about the West Oak Building. This gives us some, you know, teeth with the state to get us there, so. This is the first reading. If you have any concerns, you know, something you want to see changed, bring that to Deborah's attention. But I appreciate all the time that they put into it. Thank you.
I do have one more question, Deb. You know, this is just downtown. What about the historical things around town like, what were needs houses, old tuberculosis center for years? The house up on Fifth Street, going to be a three-story house that was a Sears and Roebuck house in 1800s? None of that's covered up in there?
They can be requested to be individualized historical buildings. There's a process to get that designation so that they will qualify for grants for preservation. So if those that are outside of the district wish to be included for those reasons, they can, there is a process for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Melanie Wilson?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Linda Varbel?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Dave Burris?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes. Takes us to resolutions. Resolution 2022-22, resolution of assignment.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-22, a resolution of assignment of delinquent, uncollectible utility billing accounts.
Misty, you want to provide a little background for them, please?
These are utility billing accounts that are deemed uncollectible either due to the passing of the individual responsible for the account or bankruptcy. So they're not even eligible to go to collection.
So then are we able to write these off tax-wise or anything like that?
No, we don't pay taxes, so we don't get a write-off.
We just get off the books and.
That's correct.
Clean things up.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Resolution 2022-23, a resolution establishing fees and charges.
I make a motion to approve 2022-23, a resolution establishing fees and charges for, I can't even pronounce it. Missoula Children's Theater and Workshop.
Second. Discussion. Jeff, this one's yours?
Yeah, this is just, it's a new program that we haven't done in Hot Springs since the 90s. It's, therefore, we don't have these fees approved by council. You approved the budget for 2023 to pay for the program. The program is approximately four, max $4,000. We'd like to, we don't have to. We would like to recoup some of those fees. It's not a requirement that we do so, but if we don't price things out, well, we don't price things, period, then they have very little value to the consumer. So we've tried to come up with a price that is affordable for families, especially in the January timeframe, which is when the event is, last, I believe it's the last week of January this, next year. We're recommending $25 for, the workshop is a week-long workshop culminating with the play on Friday night and then a matinee on Saturday. So it's basically a six-day event for the kids. So we're recommending that the workshop be $25 per child, remember a phrase, $25 for the first child, 20 for the second, and then all other in addition, the same family, 15. The maximum participation in the event is 80 kids, so I don't, we won't exceed that, I don't think, I don't expect we would. Then we have, we like a charge for the play for Grandma, Grandpa, and Mom and Dad to come to the play on Friday night and Saturday. We're recommending $8 admission per person and 25 for the family, max five folks. We just need to get council guidance on this and approval on recouping some of the fees for the event.
Any questions for Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Our final resolution, Resolution 2022-24, a resolution to establish a new part-time wastewater maintenance operator position.
Make a motion to approve 20, Resolution 2022-24, a resolution to establish a new part-time wastewater maintenance operator position.
Second.
I got Dave.
Or Larry. We'll go with Dave.
Okay. He was louder, I think, is why I got him. Thank you.
So this, to clarify, this just gives us the option to have a part-time position. It doesn't add a position to the, what's the number of full-time or equivalent positions there are already approved.
Exactly.
Any other questions?
Is part-time person to be cross-trained for the water, Jim?
It's another subject. I don't have an answer for you, Craig. They are all cross-trained to work in both areas, but I'm not going to address this individual specifically.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Brings us to new business. New business, item A, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following quitclaim deeds.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following quitclaim deeds related to the 17-foot land swap the city agreed to in the 1950s with the Fresno Catholican Avenue landowners, Russell Allen Fellows, Jerry L. Kaiser, and Crystal Henninger, Lauren and Patricia Seagrist, Kurt Seagrist, the estate of Gary L. Moller, Benny and Wade Hatch, and Carol S. and Melinda D. Haynes.
Discussion.
Mayor, I have a, just a change to note to the council. If you reviewed the quitclaim deeds, thank you, City Attorney Garland, for helping me draft these, and then he reviewed them in the council packets and indicated that on the deeds with survivorship, that would be the, in the grant convey and quitclaim to those that had as joint tenants with full rights of survivorships, I needed to add the language and not as tenants in common. So the deeds that you approved are the same, but we just added that language in those that were joint with full rights of survivorship. So just wanted to let you know that. And thank you, Garland, for reviewing it and catching it.
I want to thank Misty for doing all of the hard work of getting these deeds taken care of as a background to the necessity for them, as is in the motion back in the 1950s. Fresno Avenue, Fresno was an alley, Craig? You have the largest background on this. So it was decided that Fresno needed to be widened. I don't know the reason why, but.
There was sewer installation to provide service to built houses.
Okay.
Right?
And the agreement, the verbal agreement with the landowners at the time is that the 17 feet that was taken off of the north end of their property would be given to them on the south side of their property. And that never got finalized. It never ended up at the courthouse.
The south side of property is in Lincoln Street.
It's Catholic, yes. So this is cleaning up what has been hanging since the 1950s and getting those people their property back to them officially. That's what council will be doing with this motion. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item B, possible motion.
Didn't she have name in that?
No.
The answer, uncle, is, no?
I think you asked that the last time, and she doesn't have a direct pecuniary interest.
No, I don't. Plus, I'm also related to the Kaisers.
Didn't that used to be your property though?
No. That was never in my name.
Okay. That's why I said that.
Oh, okay. No, it went from Alfred E. to Benny and Wade.
New business, item B, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the CDBG amended grant agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the CDBG 1919-107 subgrante amended grant agreement for an additional $204,025 for the Hot Springs Sewer and Water Improvement Project. Total CDBG award is now the maximum, is now the maximum $770,000. Current total contracted price from complete concrete is $2,208,322.88.
Second. Discussion. So this is the grant that was awarded to us for our sewer and water utilities along North River Street. Originally, we were approved for $540,000. Am I remembering that correctly, Misty?
Something like that, whatever 204 minus 770 is.
Good. Because there's some administrative fees in there, I think, also. As the project expanded, when we needed to add 1,900 feet of sewer main from Menacata to Dale's Restaurant to Battle Mountain, we quickly recognized that we were going to have additional expenses. So we asked them if we could get more money out of the community development block grants, and they awarded us another $204,000 for the total of $770,000. So that's what this is about.
We're putting sewer from, we're putting sewer in that too or just water?
Just water.
Oh.
But the grant is for sewer and water.
Okay.
For our sewer and water project. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C, possible motion discussion to approve a plat of FRMS tract 1.
I make a motion to discuss a plat of FM, FRMS tract 1 located in the northeast, one quarter of section 24, T7SR5E, BHM Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second. To clarify, you are not making a motion to approve it?
Right, because I have some stuff to discuss on this from P&amp;Z Committee.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep. This came through P&amp;Z and their recommendation isn't showing up here is why I'm bringing this forth. The parcel itself, what it is, is the hospital is making wants to buy this parcel so that they can build workforce housing for the hospital employees on it. So this is connected, this wraps around behind the ambulance property and then to the west or south, that'd be south, of the ambulance property. And the planning and zone, and so this parcel isn't even in city.
Limits?
Limits. Thank you. City limits. The only reason we get to discuss it is because it's touching city limits. So that kind of brings up a further issue of, you know, we have no real places in town here to be expanding for workforce housing. We need to be considering that area out there for further expansion or the potential thereof and be able to control what's happening out there down the road because, in essence, if this wasn't touching city limits, they could do whatever they wanted with this parcel because there are no planning and zoning out in the county. So, so if you see up on the tract for the ambulance, there's a little spotted square in the left corner of that parcel, and that is a public easement, 66-foot wide, public easement for access to the highway. And what the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted done was for that same 66-foot wide amount of property easement to go all the way along the highway edge of that parcel so that you wouldn't be having multiple entrances to that parcel. Let me see my notes here. An additional thing to think about with looking forward towards, you know, we are going to eventually want to annex this parcel because we're going to be feeding them our sewer system, no doubt. And we'll meet, and if we don't do something big, we're going to just like piecemeal it along the way. But we could, like we did at Boulder Falls, is to maintain the ag status until it is developed, so it would be more palatable to those involved with the property. The planning and zoning need, wants a stipulation to extend the easement, as noted, as I mentioned, the 66-foot wide at the ambulance entrance along the highway to decrease the number of highway approaches. And this is for safety purposes, and we believe the DOT also wants those approaches limited as well coming onto the highway. So otherwise, that parcel could be utilizing the ambulance easement. So, otherwise, that parcel could be utilizing the ambulance easement. They could just pop over there and take that instead of using what's available for them along the highway.
Well, what about that? What about the road that goes behind the hospital? This is connecting to the Pahasapa property, a road going back there into the housing area so that two ways to get in, one way to get in, just a top.
Yeah, well, all those things need to be dealt with. You know, I don't know if this can come back to us later, once the hospital gets it completed, and they could add the easement at that time. But I know the chair of the Planning and Zoning stated that he would approve it if that easement was put all the way along, and somehow that got missed or not done. But he said that the Anderson surveyor said that would be no problem to do that. So, that's why I'm saying, should we...
That last 338 E, is that part of the easement, too? It's not with that property. It's beyond that property.
No, that's private, that's private pasture land for the Pahasapa.
Well, they have a part of that from this easement all the way to that.
No, this parcel that we're talking about is tract one. It's the only thing that we're approving on this or not approving or...
We're approving five.
We're not going to table it, what's the word?
To postpone.
Differ, if we want that to happen.
I had, I wanted to bring something up for like housekeeping. I don't know if it was a typographical error, but on the plat map, it says section 26. In the meeting minutes, it says section 24. Meeting minutes, or...
Oh, yep.
Right here.
That looks like a typo.
Right there.
Okay.
I thought maybe it was a typo and maybe it...
It looks like it. It's on the platters 26, so...
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Melinda.
So, those are, like I said, this is the only area that we can expand, therefore we need to have control of what is done in this area if we want to look forward and not have to piecemeal it down the road, just keep...
So, I guess, I have a question. What comes first, annexation or development?
Well, you would like it to be annexed first because development's going to do whatever they act they want.
Yeah.
Because there's no codes in the county. So, if we want it to be part of the city, we want to be able to tell them that they need to put roads in at this, you know, this way and only so much, many approaches to the highway. You know, you want to be able to have that say as we expand.
Were you talking about forced annexation or seeing it felt good?
Yeah, because, see, I don't know anything about how to annex property or...
Well, Planning and Zoning has been promoting that the city find a specialist for that to help us go through that. And I don't know how much Garland knows about annexation.
Well, in what you've discussed here, in my eyes, I feel the document's incomplete, not enough proper information reflected on the document for us to have a good review and either vote yea or nay. I think this needs to go back and worked the way it's supposed to so that we will be clear with what we're looking at in approving or denying this tract.
When I received the minutes from the P&amp;Z meeting, and they indicated that this plat was approved with the stipulation, I asked Scott, who communicates that stipulation? And he thought it should be council. But you, as a council, got this plat on your agenda because it was recommended to be approved with stipulations. I'm not sure anyone communicated the stipulations with the people who presented the plat map to you.
I think Scott was supposed to clarify that or to include that when he put this for approval, but...
Because I don't think you can approve it with stipulations. You would table it, and then you would share your stipulations, and then it would come back to you for approval with whatever stipulations you had in place, taken care of.
We don't table them or do we?
We defer.
You would defer.
Differ.
You would postpone to a different meeting. You're right. Thank you.
Oh, several. She said the bench is going to have city sewer?
Well, where else is it going to come from?
Where does the water come from?
It'll have to have that, too. So, we're going to have to end up annexing this, too, won't we? I mean, because we annex...
I would think it would get water, too, or it ought to be in city limits.
Right. Has anyone from the hospital discussed this with anyone at City Hall, what their plans are?
Should it be in our...
I should have let the...
Public Works.
Public Works, yeah. Haven't heard anything from them.
I say we defer.
Yeah, I think we need a lot more information.
Yep.
So, to Deborah's comment about annexation, it is certainly recognized that there's very few places the city can grow that particular section. We can grow into easily. Someone had mentioned forced annexation. I certainly am not on board, you know, initially with a forced annexation. There needs to be those conversations with the property owners and the folks that want to develop it. And it's my understanding that those conversations are happening. But until we know exactly what they want to do, it's difficult to ask the council to make a decision. So, to Deborah's point, can you repeat the motion, Deborah, that you had made?
Do I, should I change it to deferring rather than just discussion?
Referring it back to committee.
We did discuss it, so would it be a separate motion? I mean, your motion was to discuss it.
Okay, yeah, so...
Okay, so hers was just to discuss it?
Right, yeah. So, all in favor of discussion?
Yes, we did it.
So, then I'll make a new motion to defer with the stipulations of a 66-foot wide easement along the highway edge of 531 feet, 531.34 feet of the front of that parcel.
531?
Point 34 feet.
Point 34.
So, to defer it, we need to send it to someplace?
We need to have Anderson re-submit the plat with that easement on it.
We'd have to file an easement, too. So, they'd have to file it first.
Is, is this something that has to be done right away?
Or give it back to the hospital because they're paying for this? This is their plat, this is their plan, right? And they're the ones that probably paid for the survey.
So, many questions arise, you know? Did they have that easement on there, and it did not get platted properly?
We have to communicate back.
Through the engineering company before we received it. I mean, it could have been requested. We don't know that.
Yes, yes.
I would say return it to, return it to the hospital for clarification and proper plating.
With the stipulation, with the stipulation for that 66-foot wide public access along the highway.
Would it be easier just to disapprove the submitted plat and let them submit a new plat with the...
I would have expected P&amp;Z to do that if you had stipulations to not recommend approval to council with stipulations, but to say, we don't approve this at this time. We have these stipulations, and then communicate that either to Fall River Health Services through Anderson, who sent us the plat for approval, or directly with Fall River Health.
I think we should ask Scott Soggy. He was the one that understood what was going to, supposed to happen with that. He was going to take care of it, I thought.
I did ask him. He thought council would be the one to communicate the stipulation.
P&amp;Z's not going to be happy, but I'd like to defer it back to P&amp;Z and take another run at this thing.
I will take that back to them, then.
So, then, is your motion to defer it back to P&amp;Z for further consideration and recommendation, or...
Do they have the power to send it back to Fall River Health Services? Is that what they should do with the stipulation of the public access?
Who was the last person that dealt with this before it got to us?
P&amp;Z.
So...
And Scott Soggy was...
He was a part of P&amp;Z, though.
He's the one that brought it to the P&amp;Z.
But the P&amp;Z got it, and it was coming, came to us, right? So, defer back to P&amp;Z.
Yeah, it should not, probably should not have come to council. It should have gone back to Anderson with the stipulation.
Right.
We got them in a complete document.
So, that's what I...
Return to P&amp;Z.
Make a motion to return it to P&amp;Z for them to make clarifications, replatted, corrected plat, to make a corrected plat with the stipulated public access.
I'll second that.
I think before it...
Who?
We, council, should go to public works themselves. You know, especially if they want water, too, and all that stuff, naturally.
Disappoint.
What's up with you guys? You guys paid a big buck.
Does the plat, I'm sorry, I just wonder, does the plat obligate the city to do that? Could they be two separate items? You're asking for an easement. Now, we're talking about water and sewer being extended out there and having to know that before we approve the plat. I can see them being two separate things, but I'm not sure.
Someone needs to be bringing them to the table and asking what the heck intentions are here.
Well, we need to know, in their mind, are they thinking that they're going to want water and sewer? Doesn't look like we're completely done here, if you ask me. So, going back to P&amp;Z, and I think P&amp;Z probably should have a conversation with Andersons exactly what's going on. And I would have to agree with Craig that I think it should come to public works just before it comes in.
P&amp;Z can do that.
You know, before we bring it to council, so we can get any questions that we have kind of figured out and see where they want to go from there.
So, the motion is to defer it back to P&amp;Z, not a statement, a more question. And then depending on what P&amp;Z says, we'll make a determination whether it needs to go to public works or not. If they're not asking for any utilities...
But none of us know that yet.
That's why I say, but let P&amp;Z work this and answer the questions the council has.
But aren't they asking for an easement? Should that go to public works?
Yeah, because it says for utility easement here.
Yeah.
I don't know much about it. We get a few things at public works, not much.
Is it in city limits? It would not be an easement.
Yeah, it's not in city limits right now. So, we have to talk annexation, too.
So, but the track that the ambulance shed sits on, is that within city limits?
I think it is.
Because we're...
Yeah, because that's why we're, we get some say in it because it touches city limits.
Well, because this little square here, that's on the ambulance track.
Right.
Right.
And we wanted that to continue along the front of this track.
Right.
To keep, you know, if they wanted to put like four roads going into there, they'd want, they potentially could put four approaches, which could, will be a safety issue coming onto the highway. And I think the DOT does have some...
I don't think they would agree with that.
Requirements for the number, how far apart these approaches can be or how close together they can be, because they don't want everyone to have an approach and, you know, cause constant in and out every 50, every 20 feet onto a highway, even though they do going through town. It's highway through town.
Deborah?
Yes.
If you're shown on your map here, are you going to go ahead and just, where the property line here goes down, that little jog back there, is that...
That's included in the plat.
That's included.
Yes, that's, they're buying that as well.
So, that automatically will go into city...
Not necessarily, not if the, you know, not if it hasn't been...
It's not annexed.
Approved to be part of city limits.
So, for the purposes of this agenda item, we just need to kick it back to P&amp;Z and get the plat done properly?
Yeah.
And then take it from there.
Way too many unanswered questions. And if anybody wants to write down their questions, to give to P&amp;Z so we can get answers.
I think that's an excellent idea, Dave.
What did he say?
Counsel, write down any of your questions so that they can go to P&amp;Z or go to the next P&amp;Z meeting and raise your questions directly with them.
Be sure to invite Anderson and Fall River Health Services to that P&amp;Z meeting so maybe you can get some of those questions answered.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right. So, again, the motion is to defer this and send it back to P&amp;Z for further discussion and clarification.
Did you want me to request the stipulation of the 66-foot easement along 531.34 feet in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. And I have a move by Johnston and seconded by Huddleston already.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item D. A possible motion discussion to approve a plat of Stanley tract one.
I make a motion to discuss to approve the plat of Stanley tract one and Stanley tract two, a block eight Phillips addition to the city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly lot A-1, lot A-2, lot B-1, and lot B-2.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item E. Possible motion discussion to approve and authorize an emergency repair.
I make a motion to approve and authorize emergency repair of the airport hangar door not to exceed $2,000 to be funded by future contingency transfer.
Second.
My bad.
The way you just said that you did.
How did the door get damaged?
The door isn't damaged. The door is 10 years old. The door hydraulic cylinder, Jeff, am I stealing your thunder?
No, no, please. I have no thunder at night.
As near as we can tell, the hydraulic cylinders have never had any maintenance on it, and it appears that the cylinders are bleeding by. When you raise the door, it drops about one to two feet an hour. When you close the door and the wind blows, it raises about one to two feet. And so, from a safety standpoint, we'd like the door to stay up when it's supposed to stay open. From an economic standpoint, given we have a commercial contractor working in there and we're heading into winter and we have propane heat in there, we think we'll probably save the $2,000 in propane if we can keep the door shut when the wind's blowing. Has anybody looked at the hydraulic, the rams? Rick has looked at them. He hasn't pulled them off, but the investigation he has done, it appears that they're bleeding by. He doesn't think it's the check valves. It's probably the sleeve, the sleeve seals.
And this is, this is a not to exceed number. We don't think it's going to be this expensive, but until he gets it in there and tears it apart, he's not going to know exactly which pieces and parts he needs. So, it's, probably more realistically is $1,500 or $1,600, but it's money we don't have budget.
Okay, so, the only reason I'm asking these questions is because I know hydraulics work with them. Has he even looked at purchasing a kit for those?
Has he even looked at, at purchasing a kit for those things?
That's what that is.
The kits are $500 apiece, and then there's a sheet in your packet, the oil, and then it's the rental of a scissor lift, and he and Adam will do the work.
Actually, at 500 per kit, that is not bad at all.
And hopefully the check valves are not bad, because they're about $500 a pop.
Any inspection of the top of the ram, or the cylinder at the head? Is there any dents? Has it been beat on? Is anything...
No, it's just, it's just been not serviced.
Neglected.
They're, in looking at the manual, they should be serviced every 300 hours, and not sure how you count how many hours on a intermittent use like that.
Flow meter in a hydraulic...
But, as near as we can tell, the, the hydraulic cylinders have not been serviced since they were installed new.
If they wanted a mushy brain to help, I can, I'd build them.
This insert, I just confirmed with Jeff, he authored it.
My apologies, I should have put my...
We were, we were gonna require anything presented be authored and dated to you, and so, just for the record, he authored what is in front of you.
But you're right, you're gonna need to fix, though I hear you're gonna spend more than 2,000.
Yeah, the, yeah, the propane will eat you up on it.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, item F, a possible motion discussion to approve the following 2023 liquor and retail wine license renewals.
I make a motion to discuss to approve the following 2023 liquor and retail wine license renewal applications. The American Legion Post number 71, Big Time Pizza, Buffalo Dreamer Restaurant LLC, BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, doing business has Yes Way number 1177, CS Inc., doing business has Winter Circle, Dakota Mart Inc., doing business has Lynn's Dakota Mart, Doll Gen Midwest LLC, doing business has Dollar General Store 18181, Family Dollar Stores of South Dakota LLC, number 7126, Frankie's Place LLC, Frog Project LLC, doing business has The Space, Good Karma Courtyard, doing business has Morning Sunshine, Hanging J LLC, doing business has Red Rock River Resort, HSP Loft Properties LLC, Misty River Tavern LLC, Sunny Superfoods, Southern Hills Golf Course, Southern Hills Mercantile LLC, Springs Hotel LLC, doing business has Springs Coffee Kiosk, Springs Restaurant Stanwell LLC, doing business has Riverfront Gallery, and Woolies Western Grill.
Second.
Discussion. Thank you, Linda, well done.
Yeah, my tongue didn't get tied. And it kept my teeth in.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item G, a possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement to the additional sales tax fund of $257,805. Airport improvement, 212-21200-45420, and $1,624.90. Professional services, 212-21200-42200, for construction and construction administration of the 10-unit tee hangar. Total reimbursement revenue, $259,429.90, has been received from the AIP grant funding
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item H, a possible motion discussion to recognize and record the name of the supplier of 10,000 gallons of propane.
I make a motion to recognize and record the name of the supplier of 10,000 gallons of propane as required by SDCL 5-18C-6. Purchase was made with McGas at $1.79 per gallon. Other vendors considered were Nelson's Oil and Gas at $2, and Enning's Propane at $1.80. Purchase will exceed current budget authority by approximately $10,000 to be funded by future contingency transfer.
Second.
Discussion.
Has gauge been changed in the tank?
Any minute now, with this load.
We...
Not yet, but they hope to.
Yeah, we are down to 2% right now, so we expect in the next, within the next two weeks, and when they come in, we will, they're coordinating all three, or both vendors to replace the gauge and fill the tank.
Good.
2%, 10,000 gallon tank is a lot of propane.
But it's been cold.
It's really gonna get cold this week.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item I, possible motion discussion to approve travel training request.
I make a motion to approve travel training requests from police officer SRO Thomas McMillan to attend the 2022 Law Enforcement Coordinating Committee Annual Conference on 11/8 and 11/9/22 in Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item J, a possible motion discussion to approve a travel retraining request from finance officer.
I make a motion to discuss to approve a travel training request from finance officer Misty Summers Walton to attend the Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association meeting scheduled for 12/7/22 in Somerset, South Dakota.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a concern. This is going down to Leisure Lane, are you gonna be okay with that?
Sounds fabulous.
I'm just kidding.
It's gonna water town.
Right.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item K, possible motion discussion to approve a travel training request from the water maintenance operators.
Make a motion to approve the travel training requests for water maintenance operators Tad Harder and Pete Miles to attend an operator's certificate, uh, certification exams for water treatment and water dispersment two certification on 11/17/22 in Spearfish, South Dakota.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right, um, council, we're gonna have a long executive session, so I would ask that we defer the committee reports from tonight until our next council meeting. City Administrator, Finance Officer, and Mayor also, and a motion then to go into executive session.
I make a motion we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2-1, personnel, and three, legal.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Misty, Jeff, Garland, if you would join us, and there will be no action taken after executive session. Misty, do you have us back, 10:57?
Yep, almost.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I think Romy already did it.
And Brad.
All right, discussion?
To adjourn at 10:57?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening.